Oh, no comment. I'm just...
Yeah, looks good. This one is actually better. Are you okay?
Good afternoon, welcome to Criminal Justice and Public Safety. Before we start the following hearings, we're going to have introductions, starting on my right.
Good afternoon, I'm Rick Tom and I represent District 145 in the rest of the state.
Good afternoon, my name is Catherine Addo, I represent District 88, which is Wendell and A. Christian.
Good afternoon, my name is Mike Timmons, I represent District 45, which is Cumberland and Pallett.
Good afternoon and welcome, I'm Representative Charlotte Warren, I represent House District 85, which is Hollowaw, Manchester, and West Yard.
Good afternoon, I'm Stan Stanislawski, 7th District 24, which we all know is beautiful downtown in the city, make a front, the rolling hills of panel, the working waterfront, the New York Park and the Champaign Natural Research Mecca of Freeport, and just recently added North Yard.
Good afternoon, I'm David Burns, I'm the Senator for Washington County and parts of Coastal Paint Card County for the big meeting today.
I'm Senator Kimberly Rosen, Senate District 8, by district goes from Castine all the way up to Lincoln, and I live in Bostore.
Good afternoon, I'm Lori Foller, I represent District 8, which is Baskerville, Somerville, Hibbert Score, and a little piece of Augusta.
Good afternoon, I'm Michael Joy, I represent District 58, which is part of the...
Good afternoon, I am Tim Terrio, I represent District 79, which is Alvin, Betment, China, and beautiful...
Good afternoon, great to see so many people at the State House today, I'm Justin Chenette, and I represent House District 15, part of the City of Suffolk.
Good afternoon, I'm Representative Karen Garrish, District 20, which covers the towns of Lebanon, Aston, and part of Shafton.
Good afternoon, I'm Representative Jim David, from District 101, Hammond, Newburgh, along with falling, beautiful, pronounced...
And this afternoon, we're going to hear from the sponsors and co-sponsors first of each bill, so we're going to hear LD 415 first, if the sponsor could speak on this bill.
I would also like to give permission to the members of the committee to be able to take their time.
Are there any co-sponsors for LD 415 that would like to speak on this bill? On LD 415 right now, we're going to go in order for sponsors and co-sponsors first. Representative Powell?
So, just so that everybody knows, because I don't think the general public knows, we are running all bills at the same time, we are going to hear from sponsors first to present their bills, and then co-sponsors will follow. After we do that, we will hear from departments, after departments, we will take public testimony for all bills, in order that they sign up. So we will run everything, when people come in, they will let us know what they are testifying for, and what they are against, and everyone will get three minutes, once we are done with the department bill, keep members. So sponsors, co-sponsors will present, departments will be able to testify, and then we will run all bills, in order of sign up.
Senator Stanislawski, would you like to present this bill?
I will. I was glad to believe the co-sponsor of this bill was presented to hold his law today. This bill act to promote safe use and sale of firearms. And being as the ruling man's here, he's asked to sponsor the bill, I'd like to step down.
Absolutely. Representative Dyer?
Good afternoon, Senator...
Good afternoon, Senator Rosen, Representative Powell, distinguished members of the Joint Standing Committee on Criminal Justice and Public Safety. I'm Representative Mark Dyer of House District 43, that includes part of Portland and Fallon. I'm here today to testify and support LD 415, an act to promote safe use and sale of firearms. Let me begin by acknowledging that this is the second time this bill has been presented to this committee. This LD was originally considered and passed by both chambers of the 126th Legislature, and was subsequently vetoed by the executive. The issue addressed by this proposed statute has not abated and deserves reconsideration, despite the misgivings held by the administration. Consequently, I stand before you to advocate a policy, which I believe enhances our understanding of what a responsible gun owner should attend to in the sale of a firearm. Proposition behind this bill is this, that the state has a legitimate public safety interest in assuring that the sale of a firearm by a lawful owner does not result in the transfer of a firearm to a prohibited individual. That proposition encompasses the rationale that underscores the laws that sustain the idea of compulsory criminal background checks as part and parcel of illegal sale of a firearm. It is accomplished to prevent the sale of that weapon to any individual who has been declared to be a prohibited person. I've attached an appendix to my testimony that outlines the class of individuals that would be included as prohibited persons. I've been recently made aware that there's a bill that may arrive at this committee that would incorporate that appendix into state law. Now, as a practical matter, the background check process is most successful when the purchaser elects to acquire his or her firearm from a licensed federal firearms licensee. The FFL is required to conduct the background check as an expectation of their federal license, and do so as a matter of routine business practice. As we can all surmise, the chances that a prohibited person would seek to purchase a gun from an FFL is remote, or worse than likely. A second venue available to a prohibited person seeking to acquire a firearm unlawfully would be from a vendor at a gun show. There has been considerable national public debate about the gun show loophole, as a place where background check can be avoided, but that case cannot be made for such events to make. That condition has resulted from the combined efforts of Senator Stanislawski and gun show promoters, who have worked diligently with the participants to provide access to the technology necessary to facilitate the completion of these checks. The last arena for a sale to occur that allows a prohibited person to evade a background check is that transaction commonly referred to as a private sale. In this scenario, the prohibited person identifies a potential seller by means of a public notice published in a periodical or a computer bulletin advertising the availability of a firearm purchase. The intention of this bill is to address the background check, and how it can enter the transaction incumbent in a private sale. This bill is intended to create among private sellers, the same self-interest necessary participating in a background check procedure that is understood by FFLs and gun show vendors. The latitude groups will not sell without the purchaser submitting to a check. This proposal would hopefully lead private sellers to a similar conclusion. That said, this bill also recognizes that the vast majority of transactions involving privately transferred firearms in vain are accomplished responsibly. These are the firearms that are passed down among family members or among lifelong friends. These are guns sold or gifted to those with whom we share a history of personal trust and reliance. This bill is not an attempt to trespass on that tradition or the privacy of a family. I want to repeat that. This bill is not an attempt to substitute the sense of a legislature for the value of judgment born from relationships measured in years or decades among those we call friends or family, no matter our private understanding of these terms. This bill is aimed squarely at the private sale that occurs between two parties that have nothing in common, other than the potential sale of a firearm. Two strangers contemplating an arms-length business transaction that does by its anonymous nature implicate the public interest. What this bill does is say the following to a seller in an anonymous private sale: One, you can sell a gun without the benefit of a background check. Two, it is your decision to do so, and there is no violation of law should you not seek a verification that a background check was done on the purchaser. Three, however, if the person to whom the firearm was sold were later discovered to be a prohibited person, then you as the seller would be subject to a civil violation for having sold a gun without the benefit of a background check validating that sale. The seller in a private sale is left to decide whether the risk of selling a firearm to a stranger without the benefit of a background check makes good common sense. If there is no legitimate basis for trust, as between the parties, then this proposed statute urges verification. This proposal still provides latitude to the seller to exercise good judgment, but it does nonetheless provide a civil penalty for the exercise of a poor decision. The idea of voluntary but expected verification is not unusual. Retail outlets selling tobacco products are moving to ask every purchaser to declare their date of birth to avoid the possibility of selling to a minor. Grocery store clerks have asked me for identification when purchasing alcohol, there I'll admit one of my sins. In both instances, the sellers concluded that verifying my status was in their best interest, and in doing so insulated themselves from potential legal consequence. There are three penalty models expressed in this bill. The first is the civil violation. If you sell a gun to an unknown party, and he or she is later discovered to be a prohibited person, then you would be subject to a civil fine. If you could present documentation establishing that a background check was completed in connection with that sale, then you would be immune from prosecution for that civil infraction. If a second violation, I have to say, one would have to wonder on a second violation, but if a second violation were brought against the seller, he or she would be prosecuted for a Class E misdemeanor under the rule of strict liability. This rule finds a defendant is in legal jeopardy by virtue of a wrongful act, without any accompanying intent or mental state. In criminal law, possession crimes and statutory rape are both examples of strict liability offenses. The third consequence arises if the seller knows, or believes, that the buyer is actually a prohibited person. Under that fact pattern, the seller would be subject to prosecution for a Class E misdemeanor. However, the state would have to prove the seller's state of mind at the time of sale. To summarize, the first two violations only require the state to prove that an act occurred at the sale. The last violation requires not only proof of an act, but an accompanying state of mind. When you are caught speeding on the turnpike, the only proof necessary to establish you were speeding is the radar that establishes the act of speed. Your state of mind, why you were speeding, is not necessary to the judge's decision to find you. The first two violations in the bill adopt that rule. Driving through a roadblock to evade the trooper attempting to pull you over for speeding is not only a potential criminal act, but also raises questions about why you did what you did, and therefore required questions involving your mental state. Both have to be established to secure a criminal conviction. This is the basis or the rule for the third violation in this bill. I appreciate your attention, and urge this committee to pass favorably on this bill. Thank you.
Are there any questions from Senator Dyer? Senator Stanislawski?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I want to thank the good representative for his thorough sense of time. Otherwise, I wouldn't be able to ask the question today. The question from the table is, starting with your last session on this committee, and why can you go through a lot of the process, bring this bill forward, you work with a lot of partners. Some people wonder how we come up with these bills, while we work with those people. Could you find just briefly describing some of the processes you went through coming up with this, either last time or this time?
I will be brief, and I'm sure if I misrecall, the history, Representative Law, correct? But I think over two sessions, we looked at background checks generally, and the other component that's not reflected in this bill is what to do about individuals that may have been involuntarily committed for mental health treatment, or brought to a mental health institution by the police. That became a separate question, which I think we had very strong bipartisan support, but it failed for a lack of a fiscal note being funded. This particular piece involved a lot of constituents, who are people from what I consider legitimate gun owner associations, sportsmen, who are Republicans at the table, Democrats. We looked at this for weeks, as a way to try to check private sales. The reality is, if we are confronting a real public safety risk, it's the sale that occurs, because somebody can look it up in a certain magazine, or look online, guns had sold. And we worked really hard, have language, I think, in a very important way, honors and respects family tradition, and the fact that if I've known Senator Stanislawski for thirty years, and I want to gift him or sell him my handgun, I don't feel compelled to do a background check. I'm willing to take that risk, and some of you might have some reservation of my decision. But what this bill really focuses on, and I think that was our work in the last session, is what to do about the fact when two people come together for the sole purpose of selling a handgun, they will never see themselves again. That transaction is what caused great concern, and I think the bill's language reflects that consensus. I don't think it overreaches, I think it's very moderate in its approach, but assures some safety around that transaction.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator. You're free to go.
Free to go.
I'll stand down.
Are there any co-sponsors that would like to speak on LD 415? Seeing none. Is there anyone from the department that would like to speak on LD 415? Seeing none. Thank you. We're going to move on to LD 535, and see the sponsor is Representative Donald...
Thank you, Senator Rosen, Representative Powell, and distinguished members of the Joint Standing Committee on Criminal Justice and Public Safety. My name is Larry Gutten, and I represent House District 118, which is sixteen towns, six unorganized territories in parts of Franklin, Somerset, and Muscat, and Muscat. I'm here today to present LD 535, which is an act to amend the laws governing the concealed handgun permit application. With the increasing use of medical marijuana throughout the state, I view this bill simply as a housekeeping measure to remove certain questions from the application to carry a concealed handgun. It removes the question about small-scale possession of marijuana. A few of these questions on the application are unnecessary and single out marijuana, making it only one of three drugs which are focused on. The other two are buval and isobutyl nitrate, which are considered inhalant drugs known as toppers. There are already questions on the application about whether a person has a felony drug offense, so why are these questions applicable? As many of you know, I'm a strong supporter of the Second Amendment rights. These questions on the concealed handgun permit application are, in my opinion, should not be there. I understand that answering the questions do not inhibit a person's ability to acquire one of the permits. I was told this morning in a conversation that they don't, that they're not even used to deny a permit. So hence, why would you ask them unless your date of mine? And I've got concerns about the government knowing more than they should anyway. So anyway, thank you for your time and consideration, and I would be more than happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Representative Duncan? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any co-sponsors that would like to speak on LD 535? Seeing none. Anyone from the department that would like to speak on...
Good afternoon, Senator Rosen, Representative Powell, distinguished members of the Joint Standing Committee on Criminal Justice and Public Safety. My name is Scott Ireland, and I'm here today to represent the Maine State Police and the Department of Public Safety to testify in opposition to LD 535, an act to amend the laws governing concealed handgun permits application. This bill removes the question of marijuana use for the concealed handgun permit application. I'd like to start by saying, reiterating what the representative said. The state police, we do not deny a person's application for concealed handgun permit just because they are legal medical marijuana carryers. While they may be violation of federal law by being possession of firearms and unlawful use or controlled substance, there is no legal basis under main, current main statute in which that I would pay for it. We view this as would any other district. This bill removes all questions in reference to marijuana, in reference to adjudication for marijuana offenses, but the application will continue to ask for adjudication information on civil offenses rather than drugs. We view that as long as we're in reference to, we should be inquiring about any illegal drugs, regardless of what the drug is. We look forward to working with the sponsors, and the interest in parties to see that they are very rational, we'd be happy to just make any court sessions for this bill. On behalf of the Maine State Police and the Department of Public Safety, I'd like to review the book on that, and LD 535, and be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions, Lieutenant? Senator Burns?
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, Lieutenant, that's wonderful. What is the rationale for you don't want to issue you of nitrate, the importance of that? Three things are reported specifically.
I don't know the exact intent of how that was worked in there years ago, but that has been existing in there for some time.
Okay, do anybody that's going to be trying to report that would have some idea? I assume these are because of the importance, these have on your brain, that I don't expect you to listen to that, but you know if anybody's going to be able to speak for it?
I don't, all right, thank you.
Any other questions for Lieutenant Meyer? Seeing none, thank you very much. Okay, the sponsor for LD 548 is not here today, but would any co-sponsors like to speak on LD 548?
I don't know, Madam Chair, I would like to speak on opposition of 535.
Oh, opposition, yes, on 535, come on up.
Good afternoon, Senator Rosen, Representative Powell, and distinguished members of the Committee on Criminal Justice and Public Safety. Thank you for the opportunity to come before you today. My name is Tim Terrio, I'm the Chief Deputy in the Knox County Sheriff's Office. I'm here today to testify in opposition of LD 535 on behalf of the Maine Sheriff's Association. The MSA is in opposition if this bill is written, simply say that it addresses an issue that has yet to be clarified as to legality and to what extent marijuana is in the state of Maine. The legality of marijuana is still a contradiction of state law and federal law. Possession of the usable amount of marijuana is still a civil violation, and they do have a problem in the state of Maine, and as long as it is, the MSA can't support this bill. Thank you, Chief.
Any questions for Chief Carroll? Seeing none, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition to 535? Neither for nor against? Seeing none. Move on to LD 548, and like I said, the sponsor is not here. Would any co-sponsor like to speak on 548? In favor? Is there anyone here that would like to speak in opposition to 548? Oh, I'm sorry, we need someone to introduce the bill before we start. Senator Braykey?
Yes?
You're our co-sponsor, so we'd like to...
Well, I don't even, not even quite sure what...
We just need you to say what the bill is.
All right, that might just involve me reading the summaries.
That's right.
That's perfect.
All right. I'm going to have to work, well, great. Oh, I'm Senator Eric Braykey, and unbeknownst to me, I'm up here to introduce this bill. This is LD 548, an act to provide a concealed handgun permit for active military members. This bill allows a person who is a member of the Armed Forces of the United States or state's military forces to be eligible for a permit to carry concealed handgun if the person is not otherwise prohibited by the law. if the person is not otherwise prohibited by law from possessing a firearm. Is everything on the table? Any questions? So I don't know why you'd ask me any questions.
Seeing none. Thank you, Senator.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for presenting.
Thank you. I'm still in Carroll, Department of Oxford County Sheriff's Office. And I'm here, quite quick enough, but I'm here today to testify in support of LD 548 on behalf of Maine Sheriff's Association. The MSA is in support of this bill as written. Our active-duty military can arguably be considered the best-trained in the world. All active-duty members have been trained in mechanics and safety weaponry at varying degrees, but they all start with the very basics that we require our citizens to obtain to carry a concealed handgun permit in the state of Maine. We trust these men and women to be our defense in a time of crisis, protecting the liberties afforded to us by them around the world. As I'm sure you are aware, threats have been made against all members of U.S. military and we feel it's necessary to allow them to protect themselves as they protect us, even on a local level. The sheriffs of Maine hold a great deal of respect for our military members and have hired many veterans largely based on their level of professionalism and expertise gained in the military. We feel strongly that LD 548 should be passed to support them as they do us. Again, I thank you for your time.
Any questions? Senator Burns?
Thank you, Senator.
What prohibits the now, I think you can say what the mandate they call it?
Just the normal provisions, I don't know what's in there listed, so. And last other provision, which is to bind statute as to the provisions for anybody.
Same as any of the suits, correct?
Senator Juszczyk, another question?
Well, this question, basically the same question, is what's the problem? We're looking for some sort of solution, but we don't have the calm yet.
That?
They've already been trained, they already have a bit more character than the United States military.
Correct.
What would prevent them from getting a permit now?
Something other than the normal provisions.
Well, normal provisions are.
Our standard.
They're for everybody else. Not having the sponsors in front of us to ask such questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in support of 548? Anyone in opposition to 548?
Good afternoon, once again, Senator Rosen, Representative Foul, Distinguished Members of the Joint Standing Committee on Criminal Justice and Public Safety. I'm here to speak on behalf of the state police in the state of Public Safety in opposition of LD 548, an act to provide a concealed handgun permit to active military members. This bill allows a person who is a member of the Armed Forces of the United States or state's military forces to be eligible for permit to carry concealed handgun permit if not otherwise prohibited by law from possessing a firearm. This legislation will allow members of the Armed Forces to apply and receive a concealed handgun permit without having to complete the application like everyone else. They will not have to answer any of the questions related to criminal history, mental health, drug abuse, abuse against household members, and even rules requirement that I be truthful on the application. Under current law, given the full background for an officer's mind for concealed handgun permit, must request to complete the entire application. We feel that as long as this process is in place, the handgun permit applicants should complete the same application and be held to the same standards. We look forward to working with the sponsors and any individuals in need of assistance and concerns to address. On behalf of the Assistant Committee and Court of Justice, this bill, and on behalf of the Department of Public Safety, we would refer to both passing 548. If you have any questions, you may ask.
Any questions for Lieutenant Ireland? Senator Juszczyk?
My question is kind of the same one, I just asked. What prevents them today from getting a permit?
I don't know.
If this bill were to pass, as you say, if that's the only, this one should then not require them to answer questions that we should all want answered.
No, of course, let's think they'd be able to skip the 31 questions.
Well, they would be able to get a permit without applying to the question of that we have a permit on. Yet I would still be required. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Lieutenant? Seeing none. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition to this bill? Seeing none. Either for nor against? Seeing none. We're going to move on to LD 600.
Good afternoon. Senator Rosen, Representative Foul, Distinguished Members of the Joint Standing Committee on Criminal Justice and Public Safety. My name is Richard Pitten. I am the State Representative for House District 116 in Oxford County. I am speaking in support of LD 600, an act to conform Maine law regarding persons prohibited from possessing firearms with federal law. As outlined in the bill summary, this bill would amend Maine law prohibiting the possession of firearms to conform the law, federal law. This bill adds the following persons to the list of persons who may not possess firearms: fugitive from justice, persons who are unlawful users of or are addicted to any controlled substance which as a result prohibits them.